If you have a question, please, when I get to you, do two things for me. Set up, in two or three sentences, please, set up your question and ask the question as quickly as you can because there are a lot of people and there's probably going to be a lot of questions. Say your name, too, please.
Do you want them to come up and use the microphone?
Yeah, we're just gonna, I'm just gonna leave them there and tell them.
No, I'm answering questions.
I can repeat the question, too. For me, Denver middle schools and high schools have a lot of college-ready, college-bound programs going on, but there are a number of kids in both groups, mostly, a number of kids in the high school group whose career path isn't through a four-year institution. What can the district do better or differently to prep those kids who may be going to trade school or a technical school, something like that?
So, did everyone have a question you want to hear it again? All right, so, this is a really important question. Emily Griffith does an excellent job of this, but frankly, I don't understand why we're not going into every high school and talking about trades that have a living wage and what that job is like and the skills that are entailed. I met with the local pipe fitters, the union, and they told me they could double their internship program if they had the interest. And that amazed me. And the only high school they're partnered with is Emily Griffith. So I think what do we need desperately in our democracy is jobs with a living wage. And I, so I think we need to provide students with the, we need to expose them to all of the career opportunities that provide a living wage. College absolutely is an option, but other trades as well, absolutely.
This is a passionate question for me because I had a daughter who was not brilliant and a daughter who was not failing, but a daughter who was dressed right there in the middle. And she's right now trying to decide what to do and we're trying to get her to go to Emily Griffith, to the beauty school there. My husband is a graduate from Emily Griffith. He got a certification in GIS and he is doing very well because he was laid off from AT&amp;T after 19 years, not 20 years, but 19 years, so that they wouldn't have to pay him a pension. And he spent two years going to Emily Griffith, getting a certification. And he is now working. And the other day, when I said, "When are you going to retire?", he said, "When they don't need me anymore." So, you can go to Emily Griffith, you can get a working wage, but the thing that's really kind of sad to me is that there are places like Hamilton Middle School that has a complete machinery workshop there that is sitting idle because they don't want to teach this kind of thing anymore in DPS. And when my daughter was at Hamilton, I had to work really hard to get them to keep home at. Thank you.
Thanks, that's a really important question. There's, there are still a set of foundational skills that every student needs to have in reading, math, and science and writing, whether they're going into a trade or they're going into a four-year college. Because we want every student to be able to take different paths or, for heaven's sakes, change their minds about what they want to do. So making sure that we're really giving every student a strong basis so they can make different decisions over the course of their lives is part of the answer that, that. The other part is that Bill Ritter and I did create this statewide program that lets every junior and senior in Colorado get an AA degree from a community college while they're still in high school and getting their high school diploma, so they graduate with two years of community college under their belt. And that can either go toward a career or a trade, or it can cut down the cost of a four-year school. Aurora has done a better job of getting kids into this program than Denver has, and how can we let Aurora beat us at anything? So DPS has to do more to let kids know about this option. Thank you.
Really quickly, could I have a raise of hands of who has questions? Okay. I'm gonna slow, we're actually ahead of schedule, so I'm gonna slow it down a little bit and give you guys a minute thirty instead of a minute. Oh, big hand. Okay. I'm gonna give you a minute thirty. So, yeah, you're up next.
Okay. And do you want us to keep coming up here or should we just pass? What's this?
You could sit or you could come up, but you just, the microphone's gonna be key to this because nobody can, because of the acoustic.
So, who's the next question?
Barbara's next. We're gonna, we're, you know, go to Mike and then Mike will start the next round and so forth.
Who's gonna ask the question?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Sarah.
Sarah.
I would like to know where you stand in the, in the direction of privatizing public education and vouchers and that kind of thing.
So I think the best way to stop privatization of public education is to get more public money into public education. That's why I helped pass Amendment 23. That's why I've been working to pass Amendment 66 while also campaigning for office. It's why I supported 3A and 3B, the mill and the bond for DPS. So I think we absolutely have to fund our public schools with public money so they aren't privatized. I'm completely against vouchers. I have been a strong supporter of charter schools because I think they have helped us learn a lot about what works and what doesn't work in public education. Those are public schools. And I tell you, if anyone tried to bring what they're doing in Douglas County to Denver, I would stand shoulder to shoulder with all of you to keep that from ever coming into our city.
I'm gonna stand up mostly because I need to move on a Saturday morning or I'll fall asleep. As far as privatization goes and vouchers, I am very much against it. I am a product of public schools. My mother was the school nurse at West High School. I understand public schools and I believe that they are the one thing that we have in this United States that keeps us on an even keel. It's one of the ways we can pull ourselves out of our social economic differences, and I believe strongly in public education. I also think that charter schools do have a place, especially if they are something that the neighborhood has generated. I do not like to see some of the things that have been happening with DPS as far as placing some outside entities into some schools that they think have not been used properly, and I think that there needs to be some, some more support for neighborhood schools. I believe that vouchers are wrong and I don't think that Douglas County is doing the right thing. That being said, it's one of the reasons I live in Denver. So, that, that's, that's all I have to say except that public schools are one of the great things about the United States. Think about the girl in Afghanistan who was shot because she wanted to go to school. Thank you.
So I, I am opposed to any form of privatizing our schools. I think we need a strong neighborhood school for every child as an option. So I think that's the first thing. When, when we talk about changing a school, I'm gonna look for a process that gave the community a chance at consensus before any school was changed. That's the second thing. But I think the third thing is, and this is just the dark side of politics, that you've got to follow the money. I mean, Mrs. O'Brien raised over $170,000 and over half of it came from wealthy donors and billionaires who want to privatize our schools. And that's the sad truth of our, of our politics these days, you know? And even if you don't have a problem with people writing $10,000 checks for an unpaid school board position, how could the community be heard when people are writing $10,000 checks? So I am supported by what Barbara will call a special interest, I'm gonna call them a very special interest, which is the teachers of Denver. The Denver Classroom Teachers Association endorsed me to the tune of $12 per teacher. So I'll, I'll take that endorsement any day of the week. Thank you.
You're up. Susan? And then Ed Shackelford, you'll be next.
Barbara already sort of answered this question, but the other two I'd like to know, and if you'd like to flesh it out, that'd be great, too. Where do you stand on Amendment 66 and why?
So I gave 66 a lot of thought. As some of you may know, I supported the mill levy and I opposed the bond. I had concerns about the financial controls in place to make sure the money got to the right places, the places of greatest need. And my worst fears were realized after the bond passed. The first purchase approved by the school board was a new administration building. So we might be up to $60 million for that new building and we've got about $25 million being spent on cooling our classrooms. So I gave 66 a lot of thought and I support it. I support it because of the transparency it brings, the ECE and kindergarten funding it brings, but the check comes to the administration. And we need a school board that's going to be relentless in making sure those dollars make it into the classroom.
Boy, make it better, I have a minute and a half to talk about this. I have come out and said no to 66. I'm the only person on the, that's running for school board that has said no. And the reason why I'm saying no is not because we need money for education, because we do, but this is the wrong thing to be doing. And there's a lot of reasons why it's wrong, and I can enumerate a few of them. One of them is that it is an amendment, and there are three things up here that are trying to get stuff out of the charter, out of the Denver Charter, into some more reasonable hands. And I don't see that this needs to be an amendment. I, I'd like to see it not be that. The fact that there is two-tier level, and if you go and look, if you're making more than $75,000 a year, you are looking at a giant bite, not a little bite, a giant bite. And I think the reason why they went and did this is because after you have that giant bite, you're going to want to stop having the bite taken. And because it's an amendment and because it's already there, you're not gonna have another chance. So, look, look very carefully at this amendment because I believe that it is not the right choice. Thank you.
So I already answered, I'm totally for more funding for public schools, every opportunity that comes up. So I do want to address Mr. Kylie. It's kind of amusing, I mean, I know how to raise money. I'm not gonna pretend like I don't. I've run nonprofits for 25 years. We know that's how you fund a nonprofit, to do good work for kids. So I decided that I was gonna make sure that I had the most individual donations from individual citizens in any Denver school board race ever, and I beat that goal. I have 570 individual donors to my campaign. I am really proud of that. Mr. Kylie has 183. I think that shows that he's a little bit out of touch with the community because he did oppose the bond, which brought $3 million of upgrades and improvements into your schools in this house district. He received small donor donations that make up 78% of all of his fundraising. I have one small donor donation. And I think when you have a way of getting more people to commit to your campaign and to back you, and when you have spent more than two decades putting together a team of people of all sorts of resources, some who are experts, some who know data, some who are able to donate to help kids, of course you're able to come to a school board race and bring a team of people you've worked with for a long time. So I'm proud of that and I'm proud of saying I'll do that, same hard work for our kids if you elect me.
You're still up.
I'm still up.
Ed, Ed Shackelford?
Yeah, I guess personally, watching this in great detail, I'm very concerned about the deterioration of the neighborhood schools. And I see that what's happening is flattening the bell curve on achievement, pushing more people down low and more people up on the higher end. These are policies as a direct result of the current administration, and I want to know whether you support them and why you do what policies you think are really getting what you very specifically said closed the achievement gap. Why the current administration is doing that?
Ed, can you stand up and ask, I didn't understand what, ask the question.
Okay, the, the real issue in my mind is the difference between the neighborhood schools and all the charter schools being developed. And if you watch it, you'll see that the neighborhood schools are not doing well. What's happening in my mind is if you draw a bell curve on achievement, the bell curve is flattening, pushing more kids down and more kids up. And I think that's wrong, and the current administration's policies are creating that environment. And I want to know what their position is on supporting the current administration and the current policies as they're existing.
Or you asking how can they make it better?
How can, how they can make it better, or what the administration is doing that is making it better, because they talk about the improvements of our, we're six years into a revolution and, and it's, and it's had the wrong effect.
So you're right, the bell curve is being flattened down, and I think it's a real concern, but I do think that we are actually starting to turn the corner on this. And part of the benchmarks that we can follow is that ATC scores for the entire district have gone up, and that's a standardized test that's given to every high schooler so that you can compare how they're doing year after year, unlike you could do with CSAPS. So the direction, at least for the older students, is getting better. The elementary schools have been getting stronger all along. Denver has one of the best elementary school systems of an urban district in the country. So is that good enough? No, because it's not compared to the strongest school districts, but they're headed, they're reading, they're math, they're writing, are inching forward. They just have to improve more rapidly. Part of what's happened is that they have really focused on the thing that I'm now working on, and that's getting better principals into every school, because the principals are the instructional coach, they're the ambassador to the community, they're the problem solver with the parents. They have really worked hard to improve the skills and training of principals in the schools. They've worked really hard to make professional development be more aligned to the needs of every teacher, instead of a room with 200 people having to get the same professional development. So I think they have been trying to get the infrastructure of what supports the teachers, how qualified are the principals, and then having standards that they're moving toward, which are higher state standards. So that's reflected in enrollment is growing, parents are bringing their kids back into the district. I, I think it's healthy, it's just not enough and it's not fast enough.
Michael, we'll let you go next, and Joe, Joe hasn't had a chance to go first, so.
So this is the heart of the matter. We've been on this current trajectory for nine years, and last year we had a widened achievement gap. So that's the bad news. The good news is, what I've seen work at schools like Skinner Middle School, like North High School, is if we get the right school leadership and we get the right resources to the school and the community rallies around the school, we can turn around a school. Now, this is hard work, no doubt. When I look at the system, I look at the administration to be strong mentors of principals. Do they attract and mentor and retain talented principals? And I don't see the administration staff between the superintendent and the principals as having that skill set consistently. And I think it shows. Principals that struggle continue to struggle. I think the third aspect of this is, to be one, I think they're choking some of our neighborhood schools. Two months into the school year, George Washington High School had its enrollment decline, and so two months into the year, they cut three AP teachers. Two months into the year, the kids were already in classes with these teachers and they cut them. So I think when you, when you make these changes to neighborhood schools, when you narrow the curriculum, we're never going to close the achievement gap if the kids who are forced to go to a neighborhood school have such a narrow curriculum. Thank you.
Okay, first I want to say I have zero small donors. Then I'd like to say, I, I think that what happened at GW is, is really a sin, because not only did they close these AP classes, but they reconfigured them, and now we have AP classes for 39 students in them. And that is not helping our bell curve, because if you take the gifted and talented and you smash them on the head, you will flatten out the bell curve, but that's not a way of managing the gifted and talented. I think that you're correct in thinking that we, we are doing this, and I think this is because of standardized testing. Everybody wants to have somebody proficient. There isn't any rewards for having somebody be an excellent. It's just proficient. And so we're gonna smash everybody and make sure they're just proficient. And so that's why I've come out and actually said hate standardized testing. And somebody pointed out to me the other day that I cannot be a hater, so I must say, I extremely dislike standardized testing. Thank you.
You're first.
Ooh.
You're first. Yeah. Yeah, again, I have to say your name, I know you.
My name's John Ferguson. I think one of the most malicious problems we face in our society is racism. And I was surprised to hear Diane Radwitz say, when she was here in Denver recently, that the expression of racism, both in policy on places like the school board, but also in the classroom by teachers. I was surprised to hear Colorado Public Radio asking the question to teachers in Colorado, "Do you have good relations across the race line? Do you have good relations with students of another race? Please tell us your story." So I think that's a very important issue, and it is the real, the bottom line underneath cause of the diversity, of the disparity in outcome between white kids and kids of color. And I'd like to know what each of you would like to do or think about doing when you're on the school board, to change policy and to attack that issue.
Okay, now, I'm not so happy I'm first. But here it goes. I was at a forum at MSU the other day, there were a great number of Latino students there. I was very excited to see that demographic, the 18 to 24 demographic. And at that, at that forum, I was asked the same question, and I turned and said, "How many of you are studying to be teachers?". And none of them raised their hands. And I am just discouraged, like you can't believe, because I don't think that we are making teachers a responsible position that somebody wants to become. And it's very hard to recruit black teachers, Latino teachers, when they aren't there. So I believe that one thing that DPS can do is homegrown these teachers and work with some of the programs that are in place. There's a program that does help develop teachers, and they are hand-in-hand with DPS. And as a board member, I would support some more of these kinds of programs. Thank you. Now, which way do I go?
Mike, and then Barbara, we're last.
So I'll work that question from two angles. It reminded me of a, back to, it was, it was an open house at a, at a neighborhood high school, 90% children of color in the building. And one of the parents stood up and said, "Do you have any challenges with race?". And the principal said, "No, the kids are fine, it's the parents that are the challenge." And I always remember that because I, I have to remind myself that some of these lines are drawn by, by adults and, and not by kids. Most kids were not born to discrimination, to hate. You know, they're taught it, most kids. There's the second political angle here, and, and there is something, I think frankly, more troubling. We've got serious segregation now in our schools. We've got some schools that have 15% children of color, citywide magnet programs, and we've got other schools at 90%. The average is, I think, around 76% children of color. So the math is undeniable. It is happening not because of overt racism, but because poor families don't have the same opportunities as, as higher-income families. If you're asking a lower-income family to get their kid across town to a, to a magnet, you've already taken away that opportunity from that child. So I think we have to really scrutinize how some of these schools operate so that we bring more equity to them and more balance in terms of their composition.
Boy, there are so many things at work behind that question. One is, we all know, the economy has been really tough on families over the past couple of decades, and especially on low-income and minority families. Housing is driving a whole lot of the segregation that we're all seeing in the schools around town. So trying to figure out how a school board can work with the city on housing policy, trying to see what we can do about jobs, I mean, I think that's as much a part as education in figuring out how to make sure kids are getting equal opportunities in the schools in a, in a well-rounded, whole-tod kind of way. There are some really interesting things going on in Denver. There's a group in Stapleton and Park Hill who are meeting to overcome the barrier that Quebec has become between those two communities, to figure out how they can work on the boundaries of their schools so that they integrate their schools by redoing the boundaries with the catchment areas. There's been another group in far northeast that's working on different bus routes so different kids can get to different schools. So I think there are some solutions that are within the power of the school district, but we have to also think about the economy, jobs, and housing as real important factors in how we have a truly fair and equal and integrated community that's also reflected in the schools.
Owen?
Yeah, I will point out first that I have my ballot in hand as I listen to you. And I, I know, school board races are supposed to be nonpartisan. Our school board, I think, has been democratic for a long time, but it brings out a divide in the Democrats. The Republican Party in House District 2 is not divided and has endorsed a couple of the candidates on their ballot who align with the current majority. I'm curious if you could explain the, how you see that divide, all of you, and how, how you could bridge that divide if you were on the school board.
So we have been hearing all over town that people do not like a board that's fighting and disrupting each other. I, I mean, I think we've gotten that message loudly and clearly from all of you. That being said, there should be robust debate. I think what we have to do is get back to having a school board that can have serious discussions and debates about some of these very difficult issues, but do it in a respectful way where there is a higher level of civil discourse going on in the discussions, and then figure out how to find common ground. I personally spent most of my time at the children's campaign doing that. We had a Republican-controlled legislature, a Democratic governor, and then that switched and we got a Republican governor, and the House and Senate were mixed, and then they flipped blue. So for me to get things done on behalf of children, we had to find common ground that was nonpartisan, build a group of people who would work on it, and then move forward. Sometimes it was tiny and incremental, but we could build to a bigger thing. Sometimes you could take a big step. So it's possible to do it, and it's in this style that you conduct your business as a board member.
I'm so grateful you brought up style, because when I was getting petitions signed so that I could be on the ballot, I ran into someone who said to me, "What is your party affiliation?". And I said, "It's a nonpartisan race, I have no affiliation." And she said, "Can I ask you some questions, because I'm sure I can guess?". And I said, "It's a nonpartisan race." And she said, "What do you mean?". And I said, "Are you going into the grocery store? I'll catch you on the way back." And once she was in the grocery store, I left, because I do not want somebody like that signing my petition. I sincerely believe that when somebody has a style and says, "This is what it is and this is what it should be, and that's why I will run as a nonpartisan", I will never tell you that this is a Republican ideal, it's a Democratic ideal. I'm gonna tell you, it's a- I'm going to tell you it's a civic idea. And the reason I'm running is because I am civic, I'm oriented. And the reason I'm doing this with no money and no backing is because I'm here to serve and I'm here to listen and I'm not representing anybody but you because this is representable government at its best, or maybe its worst, but it is representable. Thank you.
I have to tell you, the funnest experience about running for a nonpartisan position is I get to go to GOP meetings. And I went to HD2 and I actually opened for Tom Tancredo, which was fun. You know, and so this is how those meetings go. "Will you support vouchers?" "No." "Okay." "Will you support 66?" "No." "Okay." "But here's what I will do for you, community, Democrat, Republican, Green Party, whatever. I'm going to make sure that you have a voice on the school board. I'm going to block the administration from changing your school without your involvement, without your voice. And I'm also going to make sure that every tax dollar is spent as much as possible in the classroom." So in my private life, I work for a software company and I deal with salespeople, who are, some of which are the most red-blooded, I think the Tea Party might be too liberal for them. You know, and so I do this every day. I work with people who have very different views than me and frankly, I seek them out. I love talking to thoughtful people who completely disagree with me. And I think I'm a little competitive and I figure, "Give me 10, 15 years and I'll fix them." I'm sure they're thinking the same about me, but, so I embrace that. I love talking to folks with diverse opinions because, you know what, every once in a while, they change my mind. And that's really the magic, I think, when you really sit down with an open mind and listen to the person across the table. Thank you.
Am I keeping it? No, actually, Joan will go last. We're now actually to the point where each of the candidates is going to do a two-minute closing. Okay, whatever. One last question. And in this case, each of you guys, I'm going to give a minute because we're running up against the limits.
You've got the easy problem. Okay.
Okay, I have a few notes, but I'm part of a parent group at an elementary school that is very concerned about how many assessments we are getting. We had another huge load of them this year and we're luckily talking to the administration about it and we have achieved, we have gotten one set of tests waived and that's really exciting for us. But I'm concerned that the assessments are redundant, that there's an enormous amount of resources spent, that they actually serve to widen the achievement gap, and I'd love to give you all a study of that. And I'm particularly concerned because my children go to a Montessori magnet school and we have a global curriculum. What these assessments are doing for us is actually narrowing our curriculum, widening our achievement gap and...
Yeah, because we're running out of time. We asked the question.
All right, so the question is, where do you stand on assessments and how would you keep them from taking over our curriculum?
Okay. The testing industry is a billion-dollar industry and they're driving this initiative because they're really short-lived. Teachers and principals want data on how your student's improving, which means your student, your child takes the test in the morning and by the afternoon they're acting on it. That's not how we do our testing currently. And so both of those things are broken. I had an interesting experience. I had my parent-teacher conference for my son and three times the teacher said, "Don't worry about the test scores, he's really quite good." And I said, "The test is saying he's partially proficient." Well, my son doesn't care about the test. There's no feedback from the teacher from these standardized tests. My son has a cute teacher, I'll be honest with you, and he wants that cute teacher to give him some feedback. He wants that positive reinforcement. So the classroom work, he takes seriously, the testing, he doesn't. One final thing is, some of my most important experiences in school, you can't put on a test. Teamwork. I learned that playing soccer. I played on a Latino-majority team. You can't put that on a test. Music, you can't put that on a test.
So I'm not grandstanding, I was told I'd go next, so...
Yes.
So you're absolutely right. And the way state government works, it's very easy to add another test and not to ever get rid of one. And especially in the early grades, they were trying to assess literacy and then they decided to do that in third grade and then George Bush said we had to have one in fourth grade. So you're absolutely right, they've sort of built up and they need to be streamlined. But I think we also have to understand, and to your earlier point, there was a time when how low-income minority kids were doing in Denver was absolutely swept under the rug. And it wasn't until Denver was forced, it was all over the country, to show how actual groups of kids were doing on tests, that we found out that there were some schools where only 5% of the kids could read or do math at grade level. So I don't think we can hide from needing to have some data, but we've gone overboard and we now need to come back to something that's reasonable. Thank you.
So I've said in public how I feel about this, but the reason I'm against standardized testing is because I was a paraprofessional and I did help administer this and I cannot even begin to tell you what a week of torture that is for students, for teachers, for parents, for anybody, for the pencils that have to be bubbled in and broken. It's just not good. So I had somebody say to me, "If you weren't going to do standardized testing, what were you going to do?" And I'm like, you know, one of the problems I had is that my daughter got through this whole process and we are trying to figure out how to teach her critical thinking. Critical thinking is something we need to be addressing in the schools. How do you make choices? How do you reference things? How do you evaluate things that you see on the web? And so I had somebody said to me, "How are we going to evaluate critical thinking?" And I said, "Well, when the child turns 27." And they all went, "Seriously? You're not going to try to evaluate until then?" And I'm like, "Seriously? I wasn't evaluated until I had my job and I was evaluated on the workplace." And I think that some things with children, you have to wait and see how they develop. Thank you.
You can stay up. Did you get the vote? I'm sorry, you got it. This is your guy. So we are now at the two-minute, that was the last question. Each candidate will now have two minutes for a closing argument, closing statement. Go.